I annotate it.
We'll call the council meeting to order, please. Real call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Amen.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dacken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlique.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
What?
Steve, were you going to?
Yeah, one item on labor relations, I'd like to pull item number four.
Okay. We have one item, scheduled hearings. Pardon me?
We have to do the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah, the consent agenda. Are we here to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
The consent agenda has a second, motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those approves, those opposed say no. That motion carries. Okay, well, we will do the scheduled hearing. We will open the hearing. Bruce, do you want us to play that to us, please?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to discuss an ordinance that would amend chapters eight and thirteen of the municipal code as it relates to municipal permits and the use of the sidewalk. The proposed ordinance was drafted to accommodate some new uses of public sidewalks by adjacent commercial businesses. The changes allow for use by permit seven days per week, as opposed to the current six-day allowance, eliminates the requirement that private property be removed on a daily basis, and it also provides for the consumption of alcoholic beverages that are sold or served by a valid licensed adjacent establishment. The ordinance also includes language that prohibits obstructions of public right-of-way. It's the recommendation of staff that the council adopt the ordinance, assign it a number, and publish it.
Are there any questions from the audience or comments from the audience? If not, go ahead. Please, please do. Name and address, please.
Hello. Liv Fuchs, 4922 15th Street Northwest, Wilmer. I just want to let you know that I'm here to show the support of the proposed sidewalk seating amendment, not only as a resident, but also as a consumer in the community, and also as a future business owner downtown. For those that you do not know me, I am one of the owners of Foxhole Brew House. Sorry, my other owners could not be here tonight, so I'm representing. I know many of you want to bring good change to downtown and grow downtown, and I feel this is one of the keys to make that happen. Let's make downtown a destination like it once was. We don't want you to come and stop by one store, but we want you to come hang out at multiple stores while you're here. My goal is to create an inviting, relaxing atmosphere for my patrons to want to stop by to enjoy delicious craft beer by themselves or with friends. Us Minnesotans like to enjoy the outdoors as much as we can in the few short months that we do have, and this would be a big draw to my business and others downtown. I'm sure there are some questions and concerns that might come up, not in opposition of this being allowed in regards to loitering. Our seating will be just for our paying customers, just as they would, as they would inside, and that will be marked out on the patio. How will we control underage consumption on the patio? I will do everything in my power to make sure that that does not happen, just as I would on the inside, to protect not only my customers, but my license. We will also be responsible to make sure the sidewalks stay clean and picked up, just as I would inside. The outside seating is an extension of my taproom, and it will be taken care of in the same manner. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments, or any further comments from the public? Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Robin Olson. I own Peterson Shoes in Wilmer, Minnesota. I am all for an aspect of growing and making our downtown community more hospitable. My great concern at this point in time is that we rush into this without having some very clear and defined ordinances that are enforced. I believe our great challenge oftentimes is the enforcement of the ordinances. My greatest concern truly is the, we're just, we may end up just exacerbating the loitering that is occurring now. I commend those individuals that really do a good job downtown keeping the area as much as they possibly can clean and tidy, but we need more help. We need the help of, first of all, ordinances, and then we need those ordinances enforced so that we don't have an unclean, unkempt downtown area. Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Are there any further comments or questions from the audience? Go ahead.
Good evening. Carol Laumer from 1313 Ala Avenue. You know, once a week it's good to come down here. Anyway, I'm speaking as a concerned citizen in this community, and a concerned citizen that, as many of you know, I work hard, but I like to play hard also, and I think having outdoor seating is a very good thing that we can do for our community. It's inviting, and when you look down the sidewalk and see people sitting outside, as I travel and go to a lot of things to do with downtowns, you see a lot of communities that have outside seating and don't have any, you know, issues with it. Yes, it does need to be kept so it's inviting and doesn't get to be messy, for sure, but I believe that would be the job of the business owners where they are sitting outside of their business and having their, that they would be monitoring that and watching that, as well as the people sitting outside, that would be sitting at their tables or benches, that type of thing. And I know Robin just mentioned about loitering, and sometimes it gets, we think of that as an issue, and I was one of them that used to think that was an issue. On the other hand, I look at it, there's activity, there's people downtown versus just nothing but empty sidewalks and the community being rolled up all day long. That's not very inviting either. So again, how do we mesh and make all of our citizens in our community, especially in our downtown area, work well together and enhance having the sidewalk ordinance so they can be sitting outside and we can be doing more things? I know a community where they have in their local park, every other Friday night, they have it, they have a beer and wine wagon there, families come down there, they listen to music, it's a family event. So again, I think it's time, I hate to say it, but I think it's time Wilmer gets into the 21st century and let's have some fun downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Go ahead.
Tracy Heine. I'm the manager of Peterson Shoes Downtown, 1208 Campbell Avenue Northwest is my residence. I think it's an awesome idea about the outdoor tables and chairs, and I'm sure I'll frequent the brew house, shouldn't say that, but anyway, but I do have a concern about what can be placed outside, not just any old table, a card table, milk crates, you know, things like that, or things that aren't, don't look nice. So I think that should be incorporated in the ordinance, you know, so it looks decent and not just a bunch of odd tables and weird chairs out, up, sitting up there. So anyway, that's my concern, but I think it's a great idea as well.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Go ahead.
It's everybody's up to your talk. And Warren Hagan, 306 Becker Avenue, I own quite a few buildings downtown, or a few, and 100% support, you know, growing the businesses and having the tables outside, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Hearing done, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the council. Do they have any questions or comments?
I would move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the agreement with.
Ordinance.
The ordinance, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I share the comments of the, one of the previous speakers having to do with having a concern about what, what the seating or the tables might look like, so I'd like to offer a friendly amendment, and it would go in section 8.3, and it would be number six. And that amendment would read furnishings must be suitable and manufactured for outdoor use and in generally good and serviceable condition.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, would you read that back to us, Kevin?
I don't have it all, sir, I'll have to.
I have, I've got it written down, if you'd like me to read it.
Okay.
Furnishings must be suitable and manufactured for outdoor use and in generally good and serviceable condition.
Okay, all those in favor of the, whoops, is this the amendment, or?
This is the amendment.
Yes. Or a resolution?
Just a discussion on the amendment, and then you vote on the amendment.
You gotta republish if it's.
A regular.
I think just a regular, just a regular vote.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? Go ahead.
Well, just a comment. I'm gonna try to state that, without trying to offend both parties here. I was at a meeting last week Tuesday and was invited, and it was a fantastic meeting with about 15 to 16 property owners, some of them here tonight expressing some of their concerns about the downtown. I met with Charlene and Jim Felth the following day, on Wednesday, after meeting Tuesday morning, and expressed some of the concerns about the barriers and the type of equipment that you're addressing with your amendment. I don't know how it got taken care of so quickly, but I thought that was quite surprising. Also, the, the other thing was, we had a good discussion with the people downtown, and I saw two different groups finally coming together on an idea and collaborating, where I've sensed this for quite a few years, that there seems to be two different groups of people in the downtown area, business owners, and I think, listening to some of the concerns tonight, I don't think we should be in a haste to do this. I'm not opposed to the idea, I think it's fantastic if we can get the downtown revitalized any way we can, this is definitely a positive thing, and of course, we have people that are willing to take a risk and invest their money in a new business downtown, that's very much appreciated. It's great to hear that kind of news, and the efforts of the design center to have that building and make it available is just, is just fantastic. There's action moving downtown, but the brew pub isn't gonna be open this, I don't think late this fall yet, and I think it'll be next, next spring before they're probably able to put out new tables and chairs. I'm a little concerned about how this whole issue came to play in the process for not only this issue, but for other issues that go on through the city. Could somebody give me the history of how this all came about?
The whole ordinance?
Yes. Who requested it? What group? When did they meet with the city council or the community, or the RICS committee? And what was the conversation there? Was there a discussion with the, the new brew pub, brew pub people to request this information, how many people were in attendance in the meeting with Charlene? Was the mayor involved in it? Were there any city council people involved in the process? Or did this just go to staff and then thrown at committee?
Well, I think, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, we'll defer that to.
Go ahead.
Mr. Bruce Peterson, who met with people for a few meetings, and he can maybe make comment on the number of people that were there and who they were?
Sure.
Mayor Yanish, council member, and members of the council, I'm not aware that any attendance records were kept at these meetings. There were a variety of meetings, including meetings by the Vision 2040 Downtown Group that led to this. For quite a while, there have been ongoing discussions regarding liquor licenses in connection with restaurants and food facilities downtown that have been attended by staff members and members of the downtown business community, members of the Wilmer Downtown Design Group. I can't point to any one group that led up to this ordinance. It really came about as a result of the city administrator asking me to begin work on nailing down the issues that needed to be addressed with regard to downtown sidewalk use and how to accommodate the expansion of some of these business uses out into the public right-of-way onto the sidewalk, and that was done. Once that information was put together, it was primarily a matter of sharing it with the city attorney who drafted the ordinance.
All right, thanks, Bruce.
Go ahead.
Could I just add a little bit? I was at one of those meetings as well, along with the business people. I don't know how I got invited, but, but I was there along with, with staff and some of the business people, so I was at one of the meetings.
And?
Just, just so that he asked if there was any city council involvement.
Okay.
Mr. Yanish.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind, we've long held this tradition that it's an interpretation of our, of our charter that ordinance amendments that are significant need to be republished, and so at this time, if you would mind asking a comment from our city attorney whether we can go through with this amendment without republishing, we can certainly go through with the amendment.
I would ask that question to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and the city clerk did alert me to this provision in the charter regarding the process for enacting ordinances, that if there's an amendment of substance at the second hearing, that it can be passed, of course it can, but before the ordinance can be passed by the council, you have to republish and hold another public hearing. That's the effect of the language. So it's an interpretation, is this amendment a matter of substance? And I think probably it is. By all means, your, the council has the power to make that amendment, it would just require another publication and another hearing at the next council meeting.
Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few other questions also concerning the, the ordinance that we are amending, and so maybe we should take some time to tweak it. I mean, I wrote down just a few of them here. One was, are the beverages gonna be served in glass containers? Will the plates be, you know, plastic or paper or ceramic? I mean, we got sidewalks out there, something drops, can you have a beer bottle out there, break, glass on the sidewalk? The size of the tables, the size of the chairs? Mr. Anderson's amendment addressed the, I guess, the style of it, needs to be outdoor furniture, but, you know, can we have a big table out there? How about dogs and other animals, are they gonna be allowed at these tables, these restaurants? Outdoor? Somebody reminded me, I got a call from two businesses downtown, and one of them said there's a reason they're called sidewalks. Sidewalks. I'm assuming folding chairs wouldn't be acceptable under your amendment. And how about noise, loud talking? And before the council meeting, I was downtown, I went, went down Fourth Street and Fifth Street and Litchfield Avenue, and on Fourth Street, the sidewalk's a little wider than Litchfield Avenue, however, you know, about three, four feet in from the curb, there are light poles, flower pots, baskets, so if, if the tables were the first five feet next to the building, the next five feet, you're walking into a tree. I mean, these things need to be discussed, and we may need, maybe need to table this and tweak the ordinance at a meeting. What was it, was it at Community Development? This was presented, or?
I think so.
Yep. That would be my suggestion, I guess, to tweak it, as we're near the end of the summer, and I think outdoor eating is fine, but it needs to be very specific for the benefit of the business owners downtown that don't sell food. The Peterson Shoes, Ken's Casuals, the, and the other, the insurance companies, Costco or Hardware Hank, because it's gonna affect their business also. It may be helping the restaurant, but it could have a, an adverse effect on the businesses that don't serve, serve food. So I suggest that we, since we can't pass the ordinance tonight with an amendment, we take it back to committee and tweak it, and I don't know if that takes a motion to table it, or I think we can do it just by having staff put it on the agenda, but I will back off my second to the amendment, and I'll, since we can't legally pass the ordinance with amendment tonight.
So how do we handle this?
Well, if, if second and the motion maker withdraw the amendment, and we understand their goal, you don't have to take action after the hearing. If you don't change the ordinance, you can take action later on, because you've held the hearing. If you change the ordinance later on, then we're certainly gonna republish, and so you could take action to table it and see what comes out of the committee's reconsideration of this item.
Should we take action to table it?
Mayor Yanish.
Go ahead.
I see two separate issues here tonight, and that's what I heard from some of the people in the audience, too. We already have tables and chairs outside on the sidewalks now. What I heard is a concern about the enforcement of ordinances, and I see a question about the education of who knows what those ordinances are, what those are. And so I'm, I'm in favor of doing this, I'm fine with the amendment. We already have tables and chairs, the sooner we do this, the sooner maybe we can educate and enforce the ordinances. I see them as two separate things, and I think it's an education for all of us to learn those ordinances, and if we aren't enforcing them, then maybe we have a different issue to step up to the plate and say, we need some community service officers down there or something else to enforce the ordinances that are there. So I would encourage us to, to move forward and, and to educate ourselves about the ordinances and what we need to, what we need to do to enforce them. So I'd like to see us continue with the amendment, so I'll second that amendment.
Does the amendment stand? Kevin? Does the amendment stand?
We have a motion, a second, a withdrawn second, and a new second, so yes, sir, it still stands.
Go ahead.
I want to make sure that I and everybody understands, if we adopt the, the record, the amendment that I put forth, it can't really go into effect, because we need to have a public hearing on it. I mean, I'm.
That's true, but you'll know the intent of the council.
I'm in a hot and a hard spot here.
You'll know the intent of the council on your motion.
Well, you'll know that, yeah, then, so then we would proceed to defeat the amended motion in order to send it back?
Or just table that?
Can you just table it after?
I guess, I guess you're right. Defeat would be better if that motion goes through, because you know the intent of the council, and it then would be required to take that new motion, implement the ordinance, publish the new ordinance, and call for a second hearing. A new hearing.
Boy, sometimes process gets in the way of progress, but.
Go ahead, councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Shouldn't we just send it back to committee and tweak the thing and have a, we're gonna have to have a new hearing anyway, from what I hear? If we, I don't think any of the council is against Mr. Anderson's amendment. We can vote on it, but we can't apply it to the ordinance, because it needs a new hearing. So wouldn't it be just wiser to take it back, tweak it? In two weeks, we could have it back here again. Well, is that enough for the hearing?
Maybe not.
No, we'd have to get his stuff redrafted and make deadlines, but you do have a motion on the table, so you must take action with it.
On the amendment?
They are both on the table.
Okay.
So the amendment first, if it passes, you know the indication of the council on that item, and then you could defeat the other if you want, and we will go back to redrafting it.
Is that a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Furthermore, the, the tables and chairs that are already out there are being used, and I don't think we're gonna send the police down there and scoot them off while we're tweaking this amendment. We haven't yet this year. It's at their pleasure, so, so I would suggest tabling it. I move to table, well, we have an amendment on the floor first, that's right, my fault.
Mayor Yanish.
Go ahead.
Just a point of clarification, this is an amendment to an ordinance that's already, we're amending some of the items, correct?
Correct. It's an existing ordinance, you're making an amendment to an ordinance that will amend the existing ordinance, and you can handle it any which way. You can table it right now, because it'll override any other amendments, or you can take the vote on the amendment to find the indication of the council on that item. But a motion to table overrides all others.
I'll move to table it and send it back to a committee.
Second.
A motion is made and seconded to table the motion of the municipal code relating to permits and sidewalk use. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, are we gonna have any discussion on this?
Sure, discussion, I'm sorry.
If we're gonna send it back, I guess one question I would have is, for the city attorney is, we do have a clause in the ordinance that requires that anybody that gets a permit for tables and chairs on the sidewalk would indemnify the city from any claims for injury or damage or whatever. Normally, when we have that, we also require that they show proof of some insurance to show that there is enough, well, so there's a source of indemnification for sure, and I was, I don't see that in this ordinance, and I missed it the first time I looked at it, and I apologize for that, but I just didn't catch it. I think we're gonna send it back, if this vote should pass, that, that you might wanna, if you didn't look at that before, maybe you might want to consider it.
Thank you. So we do have a motion on the table, right?
Correct. Motion to table.
To table.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just a quick comment. Again, I support this motion only on, on the issue that people that are here tonight have not all gotten together and, and really collaborated on the issue. They have some thoughts, and, and these are the, the downtown, they should all have an input and come to consensus, and I don't think that's all been attained yet. There's some concerns here, and again, it isn't that we don't want to improve the downtown by defeating this motion. It's an issue, we do want to improve the downtown, we want to make it better and viable for all businesses and for the public to use, but unless we have full collaboration and cooperation, I think it'd be a disservice to not support tabling this tonight, and I, I just relish the idea that the groups are gonna get together and talk about it. I think that's, that's the way it should be done, a little bit more. We're not in any rush with this, let's do it right.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, having grown up in this town, I remember in the 40s and in the 50s and in the 60s, until I went into the military and then came back again in the 70s, we had a great downtown, especially growing up here, going to school there. It was a great downtown, it was vibrant, it was thriving, we had a great business community. We need to get back to that, but that's up to the business community to make that work as far as I'm concerned. We just, we need to go slow, we need to make sure that we know what we're doing. I'm not sure that tonight is a signal of the fact that we really know what we're doing and why we're doing it, or the investment that the council may or may not have to make. We need to know those things, and we don't know those things yet, okay? And they're important, and so I would certainly support tabling this.
Councilman Dyerly, did you have a question?
I did, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it's gonna be sent back to committee, I want to make sure all the council people have all their questions and solutions put down on paper, so we don't have to deal with this again. I mean, I'm, I'm getting tired of having a meeting and then someone isn't prepared or doesn't come prepared, or didn't read anything, and then they bring up an issue. We gotta get better organized, so. We did have that community development, and it seemed to be working okay, but now... We did have that community development, and it seemed to be working okay, but now we don't think of everything, so. And we need the public input, too.
Thank you. Councilman Dacken?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Let me again reemphasize Chapter 27, State Auditor, that indicates minutes are so important, and that the minutes are accurate, okay? So maybe if we had accurate Chapter 27 minutes, we wouldn't have so much difficulty in situations like this. We need to be very cognizant of that and make sure that we get good minutes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling the motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no.
No.
That motion carries. Steve Brizendine, would you like to come up and do our retirement?
Yes, Mayor Yanis, members of the council, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to recognize a very valued member of our city staff. LeAnn Freeman has submitted her retirement papers, and her last day is this Wednesday, September 17th. So I'd like to call LeAnn up to the table at this time. LeAnn has been a recreation supervisor since 1990, I believe, so I'm a 24-year employee of the city of Wilmer. She has had many roles over that time. She started out as mainly the women's recreation supervisor. When change needed to take place, LeAnn has always stepped to the table and has been willing to try new things, to be in charge of new things, to take leadership and provide leadership to not only our staff, but also the number of part-time staff that we've had, whether it's high school and college-age students, and LeAnn's done a fantastic job with that. She has, um, most recently added to her duties by, um, taking over the Dorothy Olson Aquatics Center eight years ago, even though she doesn't have the strongest, did not have the strongest of aquatic backgrounds, has done a wonderful job bringing that facility forward and, and the training of the staff and making that a fun activity for many family members to participate in. And as many of you know, she's also been very involved in the Wilmer Community and Activity Center. We will miss her. She's done a wonderful job. She's dedicated. She's a hard worker, and she's a true employee that we've all enjoyed being, having her as a part of our team. So with that, I would like to recognize LeAnn Freeman.
Sure.
You are. Just asked me if I wanted to say something, and I said, am I better after all those nice words? So, um, first of all, I want to thank the city for hiring me 24 years ago. I was originally hired for one year as I was replacing, filling in for someone that was taking a year leave of absence, and I'm still here 24 years later, so I must be enjoying what I do, and I absolutely enjoy what I do. One of the best things about being a city employee is, is, is working with the people and being part of the public and making those connections with the community, and in 24 years, I'm really proud of, of that. I do, though, have to, if it wouldn't, it wouldn't be right if I didn't thank some people along my journey of 24 years, so please bear with me, but there's been a lot of people that have retired, and city employees that have retired before me, and I couldn't have done it with them, so I need to thank them, but there's two especially that I need to thank, and one is Dale Johnson and Dave Gort. I started with them right away, 24 years ago, and watched one of them retire in 99, and then the other one retired in early 2000s, and I'm fortunate enough, I still get to see them now and then and get their input. But they were a great support team for me when I started moving here from a different community, from St. Cloud. So they became like my second family, and so I couldn't have done it without them, so I really appreciate them. To my current employees that are still there, that I've, I've got to watch a lot of employees come and move into the community, and new ones, and some that are still working, that were, were working when I started, I, I thank them for everything that they have taught me along my journey of 24 years. I came in here not knowing a lot about city politics and city codes, but these guys that work back here, they, they know their stuff, and they are glad to share it with anyone, and they have shared it tremendously with me for 24 years and helped me every step of the way, so I can't thank them enough. As Steve says, I've worked with a lot of part-time, temporary part-time students over the last 24 years, and that's been, for me, has been a real joy to work with. They're like family to me. I, I don't have children, so they have all become, the last 24 years, my children, and they have been calling me the last week and a half past ones, and wishing me the best of luck and happy for my retirement, and sorry that they couldn't be here, to, to be here on the last day. I even have one of mine that's a nurse down in Nebraska, came up and took me to breakfast the other day. So it's been a real joy to be able to work with those kids, train them. They, I've learned a lot from them. They have a lot to offer. They're the, they're the future of any city that they're working in, and I, I believe that they'll all be great leaders. It's been challenging over the years, but it's also brought so much more joy. There's more people in this community that I have met over the years and have supported me over the years, and I, and I can't forget all the seniors that have been out at the Wilmer Community Activity Center. They've all helped me in a pinch, on a short notice. They've been there to support me, and so on, on that note, I just, I'm going to keep it short. I don't want to go any longer, but I'm inviting all of you guys, I don't know if you're new, new, tomorrow, there is a, a reception out at the community center at 2:00, so please come out and have some cake and ice cream and greet the seniors, I guess, are, are a little excited about this tomorrow, because they've already been in at 5:00 today decorating. So, and getting my input, so, but please come out, have a piece of cake and, and ice cream, and, and let me wish you, and thank you very much for this opportunity that I've had for 24 years. Now, you need to realize that I'm not, a lot of people were concerned that I am leaving the community. I'm not leaving the community. This is my community. This is my town, and I still plan on staying here, and I still plan on being involved in things, but I'm also going to be a vocal citizen of this community, too, and be able to share what I know from seeing both ends of the spectrum. So I'll be here. I'll maybe be back here, talking to you someday, so. But thank you very much. I, I appreciate the last 24 years and everything you've done. Thank you. Thank you.
My pleasure, on behalf of the city of Wilmer, to offer this token of appreciation. Thank you very much for your service. And she will be back. I believe she's going to have a whistle in hand and help us with some adult volleyball officiating as well. Thank you very much, Mayor.
At this time, we will move into the open forum. Robert Score is scheduled to speak. Robert?
Bob Score, 617 Southwest 14th Street. Before I even get started, I want to thank you guys for a little discussion tonight on this street business. That's the way I feel things should work, not just come in here and vote yes all the time and let things pass. For us that come up here and talk or listen to the meetings, that's what we like to see. That's progress at work. It's so easy to just come in and say, yes, 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 and let things go, and then us people in the private sector are wondering, you know, really what's going on here. So I commend you on that. I was really glad to see that work, even if it doesn't seem like that's how it should go, but that's what I like to see. That's, I like to see you guys hash it out a little bit. So I will, I have something I want to read here that I wrote. I'm going to go back a little story here, but it'll have some meaning to it. I call it want and waste. When I bought my first house back in 1977, the neighborhood was filled with young kids playing in one way or the other. Some of the kids played with old scooters, wagons, bikes, riding lawnmowers with the deck removed, of course. They would hook the lawnmower to the wagon and the bike behind to get as many kids on at one time. I would help them keep everything working, being I had the tools and the big garage to help them. But there was one little kid named Tori who rode a big wheel trike, if you all remember the big wheel trikes. There was something different about this big wheel, though, because the front wheel was missing about a quarter of it, and it had a nasty flat spot on it. But it never stopped him from trying to ride with the other kids. You could hear him coming from a long ways away, kapoon, 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 and my dad would always say, here comes flat wheel. And you'd just say, hey, flat wheel, how's it going? And he'd just, and you'd just keep going. He was right behind the other kids most of the time. Can you imagine the beating his little body took with that flat wheel just to hang in there with the other kids? None of these kids' equipment was new or even close to new, but they made do with what they had. Tori rode that big wheel trike for years, and then his first car was a rebuild-er and was smashed on the driver's side, so he had to climb through the window to get in. He made do with what he had, and he drove that car for years. All those kids made do with what they had and never missed a beat, having fun or getting their things accomplished. When I add up all the wages in this room, it's probably close to over $1.5 million. And not one council member or staff really questioned the second Zamboni for $130,000 or the new city truck purchase for $30,000. It went eight yes votes on both items. Why did we need new? Did we need them at all? What options did we have? Do you think about the people that struggle every month that don't make even close to the wages that you people are being paid? And then some of you even need consultants to tell you how to do your job. Also, to give the citizens who come to talk or ask questions a whopping three minutes, only trying to cut them off who so dearly pay your wages. Think about little Tori and the 14th Street kids next time you think about buying new or try to make do with what you have. Doesn't do any good to look impressive if you can't, can't perform. And by the way, the definition of form in my old dictionary that sits by my computer desk all the time is "an assembly for the discussion of questions of public interest." My source, Random House, the American Everyday Dictionary. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Nelson, did you want to speak?
He's gone.
Robin's gone?
Very well.
Okay. Three minutes, and if you would introduce yourself and your address?
Bob Ennis, 905 Trot Avenue, Southwest. I wanted to talk just for a couple of minutes about an article that I read in today's paper that had to do with the renewal of the three-year contract, or two years into three years now, for the management company for the airport. From everything that I hear, the fellow does a good job, and he's well-regarded, and I'm not exactly here to talk about that. I, for one, didn't really, I, I don't know very much about the way these airports run, but I started to do a little homework, and I was surprised to learn that the, the people and companies that use the airport for their airplanes don't pay any fees to use it. I found, I mean, I, I, I didn't believe that, so I called around town, talked to a few people, some pros, some neighbors, just to get a read on that, and I said, no, you must be wrong. Of course they have to pay for it. It's like, you know, you go to a parking lot in the cities and you have to pay for parking your car. Turns out that nobody has to pay to use the airport. I, I think this is a good example of an opportunity for the city to, having run the airport in its current location for 10 years, to take a look at how to make it into a standalone enterprise. Obviously, someday it may be that that airport gets large enough and has, has the capacity enough to serve people for commercial flights and such, individuals like us, but in the meantime, I understand there's maybe a dozen or so companies in town, probably very well-heeled companies, that use the airport for their business and for their convenience. Some own their planes, some own full-time pilots, and there's probably a handful of maybe high net worth individuals that are aviation hobbyists that have the time and the money to have fun with that hobby. The manager in the article, the manager stated that he sees about 35 to 40 flights and departures at the airport in the course of a week. That works out to about 2,000 operations, as he calls it, over the course of a year. So if that contract is $80,000 a year, seems to me, for on an average cost of $40 per user fee, that airport could support itself without asking taxpayers to fund a convenience for businesses worth millions and individuals that certainly have the means to not allow a user fee to prevent them from enjoying their hobbies. I don't think there are very many taxpayers in this city that realize that even while they're struggling to pay their mortgages, their utility bills, their sewage fees, and all the like, that they're actually paying for millionaires to park their planes. I don't think most people know that. But the important thing is, I think that this probably is a great opportunity to create a standalone enterprise that only services a very few people in Wilmer. It's not really a public good. It doesn't serve the greater public. So why don't you folks take a look at the possibility of doing the research and grinding the numbers to see if that airport could truly pay for itself?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Looks like we have an end to the open forum. The open forum is, has been spoken to. Does anybody else care to speak? Hearing none, we will move into the next, the finance committee, committee chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The finance committee met on September 8th. The first item on our agenda was public comments, and there were no public comments. The next item had to do with some door replacements at the Civic Center. Staff explained that there are nine locker room doors in the Cardinal Arena at the Civic Center that are in need of replacement. The project is budgeted for $30,000 under the 2014 capital improvements program. The lower of the two proposals received for this replacement is in the amount of $23,738. It was noted that this project will replace the original doors dating back to the initial construction of the Civic Center in the early 80s. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the contract with Chester Contracting Incorporated to replace Civic Center doors in the amount of $23,738.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to present, to move, to present the contract, to execute the contract with Chester Contracting Incorporated to replace Civic Center doors in the amount of $23,738. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That carries.
The next item was an ongoing 2015 budget, budget discussion. First part of it was having to do with fund balances. Staff reviewed the fund balance policy with us and noted it currently states under section, or part A of Section 5, unassigned, the city will maintain an unrestricted, unrestricted fund balance in the general fund of an amount not less than 100% of the next year's budgeted expenditures of the general fund. Staff suggested to us that this part might need to be amended to reflect what the city has historically done, which is to maintain an unrestricted fund balance of not less than $4 million in working capital, $1 million in self-insurance, and 2.6 in stabilization. An amended policy will be prepared and brought back to us reflecting those items for our approval at a later date. Projected 2015 fund balances were also reviewed. Staff noted the only funds available to use at the city's discretion is the Rack 8 fund balance. However, a portion of that has already been earmarked for capital improvements in both 2014 and 2015. We talked about the tax levy history. Staff reviewed the 10-year history of tax levy received, as well as comparative property tax data reflecting similar-sized communities. Councilmember Nelson requested information on city tax rates versus county rates for the past 10 years as well. Staff will research and compile this. It was noted that the 2015 tax levy is required to be certified to Candy High County by September 30th, 2014. After considerable amount of discussion, it was decided that the finance committee will meet as a full council, and that is scheduled for Monday, September 29th. So I'll be announcing that later, but just a heads-up that we're going to be meeting as a finance committee with the full council to set the levy on the 29th. And we also decided that it might be appropriate to take a tour of some of the city facilities, take a look at maybe some streets, some of our parks, and I believe we all got a note this morning asking what our availability would be. The note said, "Either pick a 2:30 or a 3:30 time," and we think that the tour, we're probably going to go in a bus if we get most of us on that, we think it's going to take a couple of hours. It will take as long as we need. So anyway, I would encourage you to get back to Kelsey on that. Then we looked at some other potential revenue sources. Chief Gary Hendrickson presented information regarding insurance-paid fire call charges. There were about 30 fire calls in 2013 where a property owner suffered some sort of property loss, and the department, Fire Department, was eligible for compensation under the Fire Department service charge, resulting, it would have been about $15,000 based on $500, a call minimum. Estimated revenue to date in 2014 is only $6,500. It was noted that Alexandria, Brainard, and Owatonna do not charge for these fire calls. Councilmembers Fagerly spoke in favor of instituting this insurance-paid call charge of $500. Finance Director Okens provided the committee with information from 2007, when the city had first discussed establishing a CenterPoint Energy franchise fee, and noted that staff has contacted CenterPoint representatives for updated statistics for 2014. That was brought up in 2007, and the council did not move in that direction. Based on the 2007 analysis, the annual fee that would be paid to the city would be approximately $250,000, and staff will present updated information again, once they get some additional information from CenterPoint. Staff also presented an estimate of debt service costs that would be incurred if the council chooses to issue bonds to fund deferred maintenance costs. Based on the most current bond issue that we issued in 2014, the cost for $1 million repaid over 10 years would be approximately $133,000 annually in interest. It was a consensus of the committee that further council discussion is needed regarding pavement management and deferred maintenance issues. So all of that was just part of our ongoing discussion and learning and looking for opportunities as we move forward on the budget discussion. There was no old business, and there was no new business, so unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the finance committee for September 9th, 2014. September 8th, September 2014, I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Councilman Christiansen, Public Works Safety Report for September 9th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet on September 9th at 4:45 PM. Item number one is calling the meeting to order. Next was public comments, and nobody stepped forward to comment. So we went on to item number three, which is the Airport Operations Supervisor Agreement, 2015 to 2017, and this is a resolution. Our Public Works Director brought forth for approval the resolution to allow the city to enter into an agreement with Eric's Aviation Services for the Airport Operations Supervisor. As per the Airport Commission's recommendation, staff along with the city attorney drafted a new agreement with Eric's Aviation Services, Inc., with minor changes, including haying the end of the runway, herbicide being applied by the operations supervisor with chemicals paid by the city, and assisting the airport manager in administrative matters. The proposed monthly fee for 2015 would be $6,428, and for 2016, $6,524. 2017 would be $6,622. Mr. Eric Rundigan with Eric's Aviation Services was present to answer additional questions from the committee. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve the resolution for the city to enter into an agreement with Eric's Aviation Services for the Airport Operations Supervisor for years 2015, 2016, and 2017.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to enter into an agreement to approve the resolution for the city to enter into an agreement with Eric's Aviation Services for the Airport Operations Supervisor for the years 2014, 15, and 16, and 17. Am I right?
Mm-hmm.
2015, 16, and 17, not 14. 15, 16, and 17. Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
Mr. Mayor, you went kind of quick. I think there were some questions.
Okay.
In response to the airport, how does the city pay for that agreement? It would be sales of fuel, hangar rental, and a grant from the state for maintenance. True? Is there any other ways we gain money, help pay for this contract?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Fagerly, the airport is a special revenue fund that is paid for exactly as you described. There is a grant for a portion of the maintenance costs that's reimbursed by the state aeronautics division, the hangar rental. All revenues generated at the airport go towards its operations, and there's some subsidy, and I don't know what that dollar amount is at this point tonight, that is subsidized by the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify that, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify a little further, everybody that parks an airplane at the airport pays a rental fee of some sort to park that airplane there correctly?
I'm not aware of that fee, Councilman.
Well, if they have a hangar out there, they pay a land rental fee that I'm aware of.
There is hangar rental space that is charged to all hangars that are located at the airport, as well as the city-owned hangar.
And the hangars are, the private hangars are personal property, which are taxed at that rate. So there is, it's not a free ride just to have an airplane at the airport, correct?
I believe that's correct.
If you have an airplane and you don't have a hangar, is there a charge for that? I'm just asking, I don't know.
That would be a question of staff. I don't know if anybody that has an airplane that does not have a hangar, they would rent to tie down the space if that was their prerogative.
If they didn't have a hangar, I believe.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't believe we charge for tie-downs, however, if you, in most cases, if you own an airplane, you want it inside, and so there are hangars available, and if you park a plane inside a hangar, you're going to either pay rent to the city or to Eric's Aviation or to the FBO, whoever has access to and control of that hangar.
Thank you.
Item number four had to do with the work order, work order number three with Bolton and Mink for Airport Industrial Stormwater Permit and Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, SWPPP. This also is a resolution. Once again, our Public Works Director brought forth for approval this work order number three with Bolton and Mink for the Airport Industrial Stormwater Permit and Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan in the amount of $7,150. The Airport Industrial Stormwater Permit renewal process is required for a new 2015 permit. The MPCA is also requiring a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan to be submitted. This work order will cover the technical assistance provided by Bolton and Mink for the application and submittal of the permit and the plan. Once again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce a resolution to approve work order number three with Bolton and Mink for the Airport Industrial Stormwater Permit and Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. Wow.
Second. A motion was made and seconded to approve the work order number three with Bolton and Mink for the Airport Industrial Stormwater Permit and Stormwater Pollution Prevention Roll call.
Any discussion?
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Our next item had to do with the final project payment for Contract One of State Project Number A 3401-63, and this also is a resolution. Once again, our Public Works Director, Mr. Christiansen, brought forth for approval the final project payment for this Contract One of Project Number A 3401-63, intended for the turf restoration and establishment of grass runway 0321 in the amount of $27,857.61 to Keakley Underground Incorporated of Kimble, Minnesota. Due to a wet June, a change order was included reducing the final contract by $18,068. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve this final project payment for Contract One of State Project Number A 3401-63.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the final project payment for Contract One of State Project A 3401-63. Roll call. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That carries.
Our next item was an amendment to, amendment number two to work order number one of Professional Services Contract with Bolton and Mink of the 2012 Airport Pavement Improvements Turf Runway. This is also a resolution, Mr. Mayor. Our Public Works Director brought forth for approval this amendment of the Professional Services Contract with Bolton and Mink. Bolton and Mink provided additional construction engineering services for reseeding and fertilizing on the turf runway rehabilitation because of poor weather conditions in June. This amendment request totaled $3,250 for the additional consultant time. Following some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve Amendment Number Two to Work Order Number One Professional Services Contract with Bolton and Mink of the 2012 Airport Pavement Improvements.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the Amendment Number Two to Work Order Number One Professional Services Contract with Bolton and Mink of the 2012 Airport Pavement Improvements. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
Next was old business. Once again, our chief of police, Mr. Felton, noted the jail census for that day, September 9th, was 101. Seventy-five of those inmates were being, from Candy High County. Twenty-one inmates were from the Minnesota Department of Corrections. We had two inmates from Swift County, two inmates from Big Stone County, and one from Stevens County. The calls for service for the previous two weeks totaled 851, which is normal. The majority of the calls are for traffic stops, followed by public assists and animal complaints. The Police Commission met this past week and authorized the internal promotion process for the captain position. Also, the deadline for resumes is scheduled for the 17th. A written test on the 22nd, and appointment of the position in November. Item number eight, from information only, was new business. There is a concern brought forward about drainage issues from a private developer, Mr. Kuzman, to the committee. Our Public Works Director explained the history as he knew it, and further discussion with the committee involved possible solution scenarios and the possibility of conversations with the Stormwater Task Force. And with that, I would ask if our Public Works Directors talked to the Stormwater Task Force yet, or made any meeting appointments?
Mayor, members of the council, I have not at this time.
Okay. We suggested at the committee meeting in May, I'll get ahold of Mr. Riddler, and maybe he can give you a buzz. There being no further business come before the committee, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. A motion and a second has been made to file the minutes of the Public Works Committee. All those in favor, discussion? I'm sorry.
Just a point of clarification, I think at the meeting, we asked that the Public Works Director, Christiansen, have the meeting with the Stormwater Task Force to meet with them, first of all, and before it comes back to the committee.
So you're asking Mr. Christiansen if he did?
No, he hasn't met with them yet, but he was going to meet with them to get up to speed on that task force and what the task force is doing and when it started, and to see if there's other issues that should happen with storm water.
Okay. And you will do that? Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
No, it's a motion to file.
Motion?
I made a motion to file the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Committee. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Labor Relations Committee meeting. Councilman Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met September 10th, Conference Room 1, 4:45. We had called a meeting and ordered, there was no public comments. Item number two is to discuss the addition of one part-time employee to assist with the emergency management planning. Our Fire Chief, Gary Hendrickson, presented his request to add a part-time position to assist the city with emergency management planning and coordinating. Chief Hendrickson stated that the position would be for approximately 28 hours per month or seven hours per week, and it would not include benefits. Chief Hendrickson stated that the position would help in reviewing and updating the city's plan, as well as assisting in coordinating training for staff and council, and planning for special events. Chief Hendrickson noted that the city does coordinate with the county's emergency management staff, and he also stated that the position would have a likely wage of approximately $14 to $14.50 per hour. After some discussion, a motion was made and seconded to approve the addition of one part-time employee to assist with the emergency management planning, and I will move that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the position, the part-time position of the, to assist emergency management planning. All those are discussion. Councilman Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm wondering why this is happening this time. We have, the county has two full-time people in emergency management, Mr. Don Erickson and Kim Lindahl as assistants. They occupy the west, part of the west side of the Lawn Horseman Center, which is for emergency management services, and are we duplicating services here? And are we kind of going backwards? Because we're trying to get the county and the city to work together on most things, you know, merging the HRA, and we've talked about assessing, and why is the need all of a sudden for a half-time emergency management when we have two full-time at the county? I guess I don't understand it. Can I?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Mr. Christiansen, or Councilman Christiansen, I think what was explained to us at the committee was that the emergency management plan has not been updated by the city for
was that, uh, the, the, uh, emergency management plan has not been updated by the city for, for a while, uh, and there is some coordination that has to take place with the county that needs the participation of the city of Wilmer also. This is not a full-time position, it's just part-time to bring things back up into a, uh, a new, a new, uh, standard that I believe we're falling behind on or we have not updated for a while regarding the mandates by every municipality to have the emergency management plan, and, uh, that's the reason for the request. If I'm wrong, uh, Mr. Hendrickson, if you could respond.
Mayor Yanish, Councilman Christian and Councilman Amen, um, you have to realize that all emergencies are local first. So if we have a tornado, an ice storm, um, those resources, we need to deal with the emergency at hand ourselves first. Once our, our resources are expended, we reach out to the county for their assistance. Uh, just to correct, Councilman Amen, just to clarify, more of a, instead of a correction, but clarify, uh, we do currently have an emergency management plan that, uh, exists with, uh, county emergency management. We have a city-county plan, which means that, um, we share that plan, we work together with that plan to develop it. However, we currently, my personal opinion, if we had a disaster in this community, we'd be in a deep load of trouble. We do not have any plans to deal with Bakken oil on the rail line. We don't have any plans to deal with if we had a release at the rail yard, just using two examples not to pick on the NSF. But we don't have any planning as well, to simplify it even more, if the computer, the city's computer system were to go down. City offices wouldn't be able to operate, we wouldn't be able to operate regular government on a regular basis. So this is to assist with that planning. There's a lot of training that needs to be done. I'd like to include city council to get some NIMS, National Incident Management System training, uh, training for you folks that have not had it yet. It's my understanding that a lot of you have not. Uh, we still have some city staff that are not trained in NIMS as well, so those are just a couple areas of my concerns.
Chris, uh, Councilman Anderson.
Thank you. I just wanna clarify one thing, we're talking about seven hours a week, you know, less than one, so that's something less than two-tenths of a, of a, of a person. So, that's what we're talking about on this.
Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From my understanding, the, the county plan covers the city because the city's in the county. Um, we, we did have a disaster, oh, I forget how many years ago, but a major tornado came through the, not in Wilmer, but just south of Wilmer and, uh, well, went through Haug Implement, or not Haug, but Arnold's, and, uh, the county and the city worked together on that from what I understand, and, and it worked out very well. Um, but does not the county plan cover the city? I mean, I know seven hours a week isn't a lot, but, um, government, government has a way of adding hours on and duties to, uh, people we hire, and, and I'm very concerned about, uh, our budgeting process and, and, uh, hiring people because we're service-oriented, but, uh, does not the county plan cover the city, Gary?
No, it does. Uh, I, don't get me wrong, it's a city-county plan, and, you know, because we're a regional center and with the county residing within the community, um, you know, yeah, it works together, we work together hand-in-hand with, uh, Don and Kim out of emergency management. However, again, repeat myself is that we need to look at emergencies on a local level. The county is not involved until Mayor Yanish or his designee would ask for assistance from the county, and then once the county resources, resources are expended, they would have to reach out to the state for resources. Councilman Dacken had brought up a point at the committee meeting about the National Guard and wanting to question about repetitive of resources. Will those resources need to be, Mayor Yanish would have to ask Sheriff, uh, Hartog for those resources through the governor to be requested on behalf of the city of Wilmer. So everything comes back to local first. I mean, if we had an ice storm or a snowplowing emergency, I mean, I'm bringing it down for the most basic element that there probably is as far as planning. We don't, we have communications issues within this community as far as eight-hundred and VHF. We have municipal utilities that communicate on VHF radios, uh, we have public works that have eight-hundred radios. We need to get everyone on board as far as that communication piece. Um, if we had a true tornado here, my fear is that we are not prepared for that to act as a community. This, uh, role, like I said, it's a maximum of seven hours a week, twenty-eight hours a month. That doesn't mean that that person's gonna work twenty-eight hours a month. Um, to Councilman Anderson's question, I believe, was, once the planning is complete, are we done? Um, and I think it's a continuous plan. We have to continue to plan on a regular basis. My role at emergency management for the U of M, I had five campuses I was in charge of as assistant director of emergency management. It's constantly planning for the next event. Hopefully, we never have one, but, like I said, this is a small piece of the puzzle I believe that's needed within the community.
Would this person be training us then too? Like you said, I recall, boy, it's been quite a few years since we, uh, were handed out the emergency management pamphlets and folders. I still have it laying on a shelf at home, but it's been, well, I bet it's been over ten years since we've, uh, looked at it, so, uh, this person would be training the council too then, if you think?
Councilman Christensen, the idea too is, is we need to have some tabletop exercises. That would be kind of the, the small evolution of getting together, a department heads, city council, whatnot, um, to practice a disaster. Rice Hospital had a simulated disaster, uh, this past summer that I participated in, uh, simulating, again, a chemical incident from the rail yard impacting the hospital, and can we, you know, where do we send patients for triage and emergency needs? Um, can we send them to ACMC? How do we get them there? So it's all part of that, uh, planning process, so this person would assist in putting together those emergency management exercises as well as hopefully at some point to take advantage of, uh, whole security management, management funding at the state for grants to do full-scale exercises, we're actually getting out equipment and moving it.
Okay. I know that pamphlet, uh, states that we, as council members and the mayor, have specific duties if there is an emergency, and we maybe need to be updated on them. Thank you very much, Gary.
You're welcome.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman Dacken.
Yeah, I agree with the chief, we need to do some, uh, some exercises, and, uh, I think it's, the, the times that we live in today, I think, demand it. You know, it's just, uh, we need to know, again, what we're doing and why we're doing it as a city in case there is an incident, a serious incident within our city, and I think you're exactly right. I think we need at least to explore this and, uh, see how we react to a, uh, an exercise, whether it's a simulated, uh, or not, it's still is good practice, it gets us accustomed to doing things differently, and, uh, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Kevin, where are we at?
Well, we have a motion and a second to approve the hiring of the part-time employee.
And that would be a simple motion.
Regular motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item number three was a consideration of the city assessor vacancy. City Clerk Halliday presented the recommendation to advertise and fill the position of city assessor. Mr. Halliday noted that the position vacancy would be created upon the retirement of Pat Erickson in December of two thousand and fourteen. Mr. Halliday also stated that the city had previously explored options such as merging with Candyway County or contracting for the services of assessing, but the staff recommendation is at that time, uh, was not, uh, was to advert, was, was the staff's recommendation was to advertise and fill the position. I believe that was two or three years ago, we talked about that. Um, Mr. Halliday also noted that the position was a range nine, with a salary range of fifty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars to sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars plus benefits, of course. Uh, the committee members expressed some concerns regarding the availability of qualified applicants in the region and statewide. Uh, following discussion, a motion was made and seconded to approve the advertisement and filing of the city assessor vacancy, uh, at the stated range, and the motion carried, and I would recommend that motion, Mr. Mayor, to be approved.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to, uh, approve the advertisement and filling of the city assessor vacancy at the stated range. Uh, is there any discussion? Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last time we talked about it, the county was interested but didn't have space because they were remodeling. Now they've remodeled and they've got space, and I heard they're ready to take over assessing for Wilmer. What has changed?
Uh, they have no interest in revisiting that at the last time we discussed that.
When was that?
Um, well, Charlene apparently had conversations with Larry fairly recently. We still also have the same concerns that were there in the study two years ago. They will not do anything with special assessments, so that whole department needs to be reviewed, and the constant lack of data for engineering, planning and zoning in the city clerk's office is, uh, a significant obstacle, and the costs, again, were really no savings. One of the benefits of having it in the old conversation, one of the very limited benefits, was the availability of the most skilled assessor, uh, helping with commercial in the whole county. That person was Pat Erickson. Now that has gone by the wayside. So, uh, all the reasons are pretty much, uh, leading to, we continue to take our responsibility, which is statutory, for the city to appraise that property, and, uh, there's no cost savings. Again, that was one of the negatives. It's just a shift between city of Wilmer taxpayers and the same cost at the county, on the county taxpayer. The taxpayer pays the same dollar amount. So the benefits are significant for keeping the data where all other departments use it, and then, of course, we never had a reasonable outcome for taking care of the very large, uh, special assessment program.
But the city assess, or county assessor signs off on everything to the state. He's a senior.
Well, I'm not certain about that. I guess I'll, I don't believe I've heard that from Pat. I know if there was any other way, she was quite concerned about being trained on the city's CAMA system because of its complexities.
Yeah. Then why does the county assessor sit in at Board of Review all the time?
Statutory requirement.
Because she's responsible.
Well, it's also the pecking order because no citizen can go beyond the, the, uh, city if they don't come to the city first, and then she's hearing the things for the county.
Thanks.
All those in favor say aye? Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noted in here that it says we don't know if there's, uh, anybody available to fill this vacancy statewide or region-wide. We have nobody in-house, correct? With the credentials to step up to this?
We have nobody in-house that has the credentials. If there was a willing member to step forward, you are, are allowed one year to achieve the AMA criteria, which that person doesn't have, but there's not a willingness to do that.
Okay.
And then the last one is far behind in training.
Guess we'll find out how many are available by advertising then. Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Councilman Dacken.
Uh, again, this is a very serious situation, we need to stay on top of it. It's a blessing that Pat's gonna still be in our area, but we really, uh, someone needs to step up and, uh, make sure that this gets handled properly, whether it's with the county as a partner or not, but something needs to change with technology driving all of We have to be, we have to be on top of this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Uh, I might want to also add, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Kevin, her, Pat Erickson, it says E-R-I-C-K-S-O-N? I think there's a typo on the minutes here, if you could correct that.
There is, I never got it.
Thank you. Um, after thirty-some years of service, we should have her name right.
Correct.
Also, the committee expressed appreciation for her dedication to the city also, she was present at the meeting. Being no further business, item number four was, um, pulled. I moved file the minutes unless there's any questions.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to file the labor committee minutes. Uh, is there any discussion? Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see, uh, there was an item number five on there too, Steve.
Did I miss one?
You offered suggestions how to possibly improve the manner in which requests for information by council members are handled. What was that about?
I, I just, we're coming back to committee, Mr. Christensen. Through the review process of, of, uh, staff and ourselves and communication, I thought it'd be in the best interest of the council to set up a, a dialogue that is more, um, understood or better understood between what our requirements are or what our expectations are of staff when we need information to make a decision on vital, vital, um, events and, um, expenses that were proven at the city council level. So my concern was that we did not want to burden staff with their already existing jobs, and what point in time do we, uh, we feel is compatible, a compatible timeframe that staff can respond to our request and still have the information prior to our meeting? So we're gonna bring it back to committee and see if we can improve on, um, communication skills between the city council and staff, and, uh, Charlene is on top of it, and I'm gonna meet with her and, uh, see if we can come up with some criteria and topic points to involve everybody. That was it.
Sounds good. Do you have a question? Okay, um, we need to, uh, vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Uh, Rick Fagerly, the chairman, commission, commission chairman, committee chairman for the community development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met September eleventh, uh, four forty-five at city hall. Item one was called order, number two was public comments, there was no public comments offered. Item three, tax increment financing, tax abatement application, fee schedule and process flow chart. Staff presented a revised application form to be used for tax increment financing and tax abatement requests. Included with the application form was a proposed fee schedule and process flow chart. Uh, the committee reviewed the documents at length. Questions were raised about the proposed fees for assistance. Staff responded that those were suggestions and could be amended as desired. Councilman Amen stated that the flow chart was good for the city and the developers as it shows the process and details responsibilities. Uh, Councilman Amen proposed more communication on the front end of financial requests to alleviate some of the concerns and issues that arose in the recent projects. Staff was asked to amend the application and to broaden the scope of information required. It will be brought to a committee meeting at a later date for further review. Uh, item four, this is a motion, purchase of wetland credits for industrial park development. The committee discussed a proposal by staff that the city purchase wetland credits as part of the wetland mitigation process for the new industrial park. An alternative to purchasing wetland credits would be establishing a wetland of approved type and form. Uh, the process becomes more expensive due to the requirements for wetland replacement that governs, governs the amount of monitoring and weeding and potential reseeding that is required for a five-year period. The proposed purchase of wetland credits was in the amount of twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars plus a transaction fee of one thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight to be paid to the state. These funds are available in the local option sales tax fund and would be part of the wetland improvement project. Following discussion, a mo, motion was made and seconded and passed for the following, that the city acquire the wetland credits as proposed for point seven acres in the amount of twenty-five thousand, two hundred plus the transaction fee of one thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to, uh, acquire the wetland credits as proposed for seven-tenths of an acre in the amount of twenty- for seven tenths of an acre in the amount of $25,200 plus the transaction fee of $16,038. Are there any questions or comments? Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you have any questions, you can ask Bruce Peterson.
Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question. Is this in lieu of water detention ponds or what's this in lieu of? Why are we buying them?
The need to purchase wetland credits is because we have a small wetland that we cannot develop around. The rest of the wetlands, we were able to develop around by, by plating the lot so that the wetlands were at the rear and the sides of the property. There is still stormwater mitigation that will occur in the plat with ponds and stormwater piping, but the wetlands have to be replaced either with lake wetlands or you have to purchase credits from, or purchase wetland credits from the bank that exist because other communities have overprovided wetland credits. In this particular case, it's much cheaper for the city to purchase the credits than it is to construct a new wetland of seven tenths acre and to maintain it for a five-year period as required by law. We're learning that out at the wastewater treatment facility. Seems like no matter what you do with your wetlands, it's never good enough. And there's been a lot of cost that has gone into those because of the ones we had to mitigate and replace out there.
So it is not in lieu of detention ponds or retention ponds at all?
No, you cannot substitute a pond for a wetland. It has to be wetland for wetland.
Where does it run off on that end of town go? Is it Hot Creek?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is a thirty-five hundredths of an acre wetland that sits right in the middle of where a street's got to be constructed, and there's, there's just no avoiding this particular wetland. There was, I think approximately, I want to say twenty-some acres of wetlands on that parcel, near twenty acres, and we were able to avoid all but .35 acres.
And there's no forgiving? It's just you gotta do it?
No. We're playing by the rules.
And that's, is that, is that state mandated or federally or?
That is, I believe, a state requirement. It's been in effect for a long time, and it applies to all projects where you are disturbing a designated wetland.
Correct, yeah. Well, sometimes I think they go overboard. Thank you for your explanation.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye. The motion carries. Thank you.
Item five, business retention and expansion survey results. The committee briefly reviewed the results of a recent EDC email survey of local businesses. Staff informed the committee that a much broader business retention and expansion survey would be conducted by the EDC in the new, near future. The survey would be compatible with the work being done by the Lake City Chamber of Commerce and Grow Minnesota Program. And the EDC board has not looked at this yet, so. Item six, old business. Staff informed the committee that the old house at 511 Seventh Street Northwest was being demolished, and it has been demolished. Staff was asked to send a letter to Habitat for Humanity for thanking them for removing the dilapidated property. Item seven, new business. Staff provided reports on the following projects, Bethesda, Taco Bell, Genio, Advanced Auto, Eagle Creek Golf Course, Elmquist Jewelry, and Sweet Living. It was noted that the construction valuations through August 2014 total in excess of $23 million. There was no further business, a meeting adjourned at 5:50. And if there's no questions, I move to file the minutes.
Second. The, and do we have a second? Yes. Okay. The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the community development meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Kevin, city auditorium, you want to talk to us about that, city auditorium renovation project?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have divorced the night the consideration of the financing plan for the city auditorium renovations. You see, there's two action items, and, and one of them is to finance the option, and I'll go through that with some detail, and of course, the awarding of the bids. I think if, I'll have the leeway, I'll talk about the bids first, and then the financing plan of how we got there. But the action, we'd certainly like to put together the financing resolution ahead of the awarding of bids. You should be, have a document showing the bids that were received on Tuesday, September 9th. We took base bids for the complete renovation and the renovation of the gun range. There are improvements to the gun range in that base bid of having rubber on the side walls, protective rubber over the pillar that is being shot up, and of course, a new rubber wall on the back in front of the deceleration chambers. Alternate G1 that's shown there of the low bid, and I'll just pick the one of $309,000, would be a deduct should we choose to eliminate all the finished work and the HVAC system that would make the gun range operable. Alternate G2 was bid, which added a variety of changes to the gun range to probably make it as current as they make them if they built one brand-new today. Staff's recommendation is that we stay with the base bid because it clearly renovates the auditorium, putting it back into the position that it was before we took out all that ductwork and all the asbestos and all the other tile out of there, and makes the gun range quite operable with new furnishings on almost all walls and floors and ceilings and the improvements that I talked about. That base bid award, and it would be staff's recommendation, to award it to Cornerstone Construction for the stated $744,000 that's listed. In order to finance that, we have a document put together for you initially showing all the costs. So the third page in there talks about all the contracts that are locked in to date, including the very initial one, which was the master plan for Engen and Associates, the hazard abatement activities with Echo Midwest out of Hastings, Minnesota. And to date, we have locked in $279,121 in contracts, plus an unconfirmed dumpster quantity count that you knew was part of the last contract. With the renovation bid, as previously discussed, of $744,000, it is prudent to put a contingency of 10% of $74,400. Therefore, we need to finance $1,097,521. We put together the financing proposal, and we have listed the seven criterias, starting with the 2014 capital improvement program that's already been adopted, and that's what we were paying these contracts from of a quarter million dollars. We are recommending, action two, is to take our longstanding $1 million insurance deductible reserve from the $1 million threshold down to the $750,000 threshold. And in subsequent payments from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust for having good loss years, we'd recommend taking those dividends and rebates and putting them back dedicated to that reserve until it reestablished itself at a level of $1 million. Step three is taking a loan from the PIR, the Permanent Improvement Revolving Loan Fund. By your own adoption, it's a five-year payback required. So if we take $250,000 out of there, in a five-year program, $50,000 must be in the budget in the subsequent years to pay it back. Step four is the excess capital improvement dollars. We've located $50,000 in an airport project that is not going to be undertaken this year, and we are proposing to use those funds. Step five is to dedicate the RAC8 reserves to this project that will close out the reserve balance of $163,000. We read earlier in the finance committee that some was dedicated to this year and next year. You've recently taken action to give $125,000 to the Zamboni Purchase, and subsequent to a cable access committee meeting, you took action to dedicate $25,000 of that for certain projects in 2015. We are talking here of the residue of $163,000. In the 2014 excess vehicle replacement dollars, those are certain items that were identified because you may put $190,000 down for a truck or a grader, and we've made some purchases, and we can safely say that they were under the estimate, and those dollars have been freed up. And then the seventh one is prior year capital funds pursuant to our charter. We keep capital improvement projects going three years. There are some 2011 and 12 projects that are not going to be carried out, and that is $82,000 that we can identify. That gives us a total of $1,125,000, knowing already that a quarter of a million was already spent and dedicated. That's a little more than the expenses, but we like to be on the safer side of identifying funds than an exact match. It is staff's recommendation, and we have listed some alternates here, but we don't take them. We take the award of $744,000 to Cornerstone to renovate the auditorium, to make those improvements, as I listed earlier, to the gun range, and to enter into a contract with them to carry that out in about 100 days. The resolution that's approved for the budget for this project would take care of the actions of these items, and the finance director would carry those out subsequent to the adoption of that resolution detailing these items. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that we adopt two resolutions. The initial one is the financing plan, and it's a budget for the project. And if that passes, to enter into a contract with Cornerstone for the $744,000 base bid.
So that would be the, the motion?
Two resolutions.
Two resolutions.
Recommend the financing plan be addressed initially.
First, okay. Capital improvement adaptive allocation?
Yeah, this whole thing.
Yeah. $250,000?
Yeah, right.
Or the total amount?
No, the financing options are before that.
Financing options would be the $250,000.
Well, it starts out with that, yeah. Can I?
Go ahead.
Have a comment. You know, we have, we haven't acted on items two and three, but we've pretty much agreed those two, $250,000 increments. We've talked about them, and we've talked about them at the council, and we've pretty much said that looks like the way we need to go. So this is, that's nothing new to us. I have a question of Kevin on what happens in outgoing years if, for instance, we take number six, the 2014 excess vehicle replacement program dollars? Would, would that have been money that would have gone into a budget two years hence?
Sixteen, that is correct.
So, so we're, we're taking money now that we would have been using.
In sixteen.
In twenty, and the same thing with the, the $82,000 of prior year capital funds? Or does that just go away?
Well, I think those projects have maybe one gone away or been rebudgeted for in, in fifteen, because it's past the three years and they didn't carry them out. Some of them may be in the IT department and so forth, and certain things weren't, weren't budgeted, so they free up. But clearly, you are taking the money in fourteen, that's already identified, and not allowing it to be extended to sixteen. You're going to reduce those dollars.
And I'll make just one more comment. On number, number three, the 2014 PIR loan, we do have in the 2015 budget, $50,000 is in there to start the repayment of that. So.
Councilman?
Go ahead. He was first.
Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to commend you, Kevin, and your staff for coming up with the money. It seems like an awful lot of money, over $1 million, to repair and replace needed items at the auditorium, including the gun range. However, that building was built in the thirties, forties?
Thirties.
So, so we've been using it, and I'm sure the cost of it then wasn't $1 million, it was considerably less. So if you, if you divide, you know, the amount that we're spending by the years it's been used and by maybe the next forty or fifty years, it's, it's pretty, pretty reasonable, awful reasonable. And it is a, I believe it's on a historical, state historical, what do you call it?
Register.
Register. And I think we owe to the people that built it, and we have a war memorial room in there for those that have served our country in, in all the wars. I think we need to, to do this project, and I, I'm comfortable with the way you've come up with the financing plan, and again, I commend you guys for doing this. It looks good.
Just a clarification, it's my understanding, and I'm curious if that's correct or not, that any improvements we make triggers the ADA requirements to make improvements to the building? So does this, does this trigger that? And if it does, is that amount to, is that in the estimate already?
We believe it doesn't. It's so heavy and mechanical that it does not trigger that. As you can see with the electrical and the mechanical subcontractors that are listed in your document, there's 470,000 of this, just changing the mechanical, upgrading those, which in time, as Councilmember Christian said, would run out anyway, would, would serve its useful life. So we believe that it does not, and there is no money in here for an elevator. The initial ADA that we talked about at one time would be the bathrooms on the west side of the main floor auditorium, and we may work on that, which is not a large expense. Clearly, the elevator is, in our conversations with the state of Minnesota to assist in that, we learned we would not rank very high because we have not yet identified uses on the second and third floor. And so it's not in the budget, and we'll continue to look for ADA grants out there that we may be competitive on, but we need to identify certain uses of the building.
I have a second question. Yes. The other question, if I understand correctly, there are licenses or permits or things that need to be done in order to operate the gun range in the building. Have we obtained those, or are we aware of what those are? And then in conjunction with that, do we have an updated contract with the gun club as to how the, this business model would run for a private, for the private gun club?
We do not have any of those items in place. The adoption of this will trigger that, knowing that you're going to go forward. We need a cleaning plan, we need a lead abatement plan, we need to decide if we're going to clean that ourselves or contract that out. We will have new protocols for testing. We use Braun Intertect, as you know, and Green Bay Lead Testing. Once in thirty years, that will no longer happen. Those new protocols will be told to us either by Midwest Environmental Consulting as they exit the program. exit the program here, or Safe for Sure. And it's probably testing every two years to make certain we do not have any more lead being pushed all over the building. All those protocols will be triggered the moment we take this action, and staff will begin to work on those.
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
Just one more. I'm concerned, I'm fine going forward with this. I'm surprised that we don't have that agreement in place, just to reassure us that they are willing to participate at the cost or level that it's going to take and to follow those things before we spend that additional money to put that back into action. I'm just curious why we don't have that document in place now.
Well, at this point, I guess we just have a verbal commitment from them, that they're going to be very active in the facility. We have not yet made a staff recommendation to you regarding their ability to clean, or lack thereof, or their desire to clean, or our desire to have them clean. So we have to sit down and certainly identify what we want them to do. Maybe they just become users, and we stay in the contractual side to keep it cleaned. They will just simply tell us they're quite interested in getting this up and running, and they'll be back. I mean, we certainly can't price them out of existence. We can't price it at $2 a shooting that it was last time. So we will just be working on those and coming forward with that very quickly.
Just, I know other groups, I mean, have participated, and have we asked them to participate in the cost of this? Any different than the archery club or the disc golf with that? So just curious.
Other users in the rec department, you mean, like basketball or so forth? Or what?
No, I was referring to, you know, the archery range, I mean, stepped up with some capital dollars, so did the, you know, those types of things. We did that when we had the pool with that, and this is a private club that's operating in a city building. So I was just curious if that was something that had been asked of that, too?
It has not been asked and not yet addressed, to my knowledge.
It's a lot of dollars, and I know there's a desire to move forward. I just think that there should be some checks and balances there before we make this decision. So.
Councilman Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, this is a lot of dollars, but a major portion of the dollars is spent in the auditorium. It's not all dedicated toward the gun range. And that gun range did operate there previously for a good number of years. And they did pay the city for the use of that facility over time. And like Councilmember Christensen's point was, that as we go forward with this building, when you look at the total cost, and divide it out over the useful life of it, it becomes more of a negligible amount. So I guess I have one question a little bit about, I know you said the ADA does not trigger with the improvements that we're making right now, but any other code items come into play, such as sprinkling or any of that type of stuff, trigger with the improvements we're doing to the building right now?
Well, I believe not, and I believe our architect has had conversations with their building department, just to make sure that is a proper position. Certainly, there are some other rules and regulations with PCA and how to take care of the lead, and we will be getting a program up and running that is current and legal.
Okay, Adam, we had the financing plan, we needed a motion to approve that?
Resolution.
A resolution? That resolution has not been made yet?
No.
I'll make that resolution. Could you repeat that to us, exactly what the resolution is?
The resolution is an adoption of the budget, and you've seen those resolutions in public works projects and street projects. They identify on one side the cost, and they identify the revenues. And we are listing the revenues in detail of what was shown to you on this memo. It's for 1,121,000. The excess revenue over what is, at this point, contracted for will be just left in the contingency fund.
Did we have a second on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we have a motion, a roll call?
Mr.?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We need to go ahead on this, but I have some concerns about some of these places where we're taking the money from. And I guess my question is, as we go through the budget process, if we identify on down the road funding, or cuts, or other things, we can amend this, can't we? So that we could, for instance, replace the rack eight reserves, or whatever we wanted to do. We're not bound to these particular items if we find additional ways.
If you can find replacement dollars, let's just say in the prior year, 2011, 12 projects that are going to be terminated, and there was sufficiently 163,000 there, you could make a choice to use those dollars and not the rack eight reserve.
The finance committee is looking at a number of different things, and the council will be looking at it. So I just want to make sure that we can substitute, and we'll just have to amend the budget, is all we would do then. Okay.
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
Just a clarification, what does it say in the rack eight reserves that we are collecting that for? Anything in particular?
It does not say you are not held to technology-type devices for it. It is, that's always an issue, but it's not, there's no criteria that are listed in any ordinance of where the expenditures must come from that revenue source.
Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding is it's general revenue fund money, basically. Just a comment on the going ahead with this project, especially the gun range. When it's finished, we'll have one of the finest indoor ranges in the state. It'll be up to date, 21st century standards. It'll attract other people here. And in this day and age, our Second Amendment rights are being attacked, and people are wanting to protect themselves more and more. We have many instructors in town, several of them, that use that range to teach safety. What a better place to have in our city than a gun range to teach safety and how, and teach people how to safely operate handguns. We'll be proud of the thing. It just, I can't wait till it's done. It'll be an attraction, like I say, for a lot of people. Many people from out of town already did come through the winter months when it was open, and I can commend you for finding the money, and let's move ahead on this.
Councilman Omen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have to maintain our buildings, that's no doubt, and this is a surprise to us. I have a couple of questions, and if I'm boring you, please let me know, but that purchase of that Zamboni machine has been approved and has been signed, correct?
That was a resolution adopted two weeks ago, and it should be in your minutes here.
Yes, yeah. Okay, well, so much for that idea. The other one was looking at item number five and dedicating the rack eight reserves, 163,000. That's going to close out that reserve balance. And I was down meeting with Mr. Veehill the other day, and my concern is also, we're in the process of remodeling and repainting and refurbishing the inside of that facility. The outside of that facility needs some tender loving care also. The brick needs a re-tuck point in the front, and we have loosened and decaying loose bricks up on the top, on the top mezzanine there that are about ready to fall off, and it needs to be redone. So I'm concerned about draining that down to nothing. I'm not sure what that's going to cost, but I'm going to throw a guesstimate of 5,000 to redo that. But it's in dire need also. That was one of my questions or comments, if that's of any interest to the council. The other thing is, have we looked at the vehicle replacement program? If we were to delay the vehicle replacement program by one year, has staff come up with a financial, or a dollar amount that we would be saving by delaying? Not the non-essential, I mean, I'm talking about the non-essential, not the emergency of the police department and the fire department. What would we be able to save if we could make everything run for one more year?
And, Councilmember? We have not identified in this proposal that aspect. In the vehicle replacement policy, we looked at what was purchased this year significantly under the budget that was proposed. And sometimes you might find something from a grader or something that's 18,000. Maybe there's a vehicle that's 500, we just ignored that. We don't have time for 500 things. We've identified enough in this, the 76,000 of significant purchases, to do what you're asking is pretty much on line for the budget program right now in 2015. I mean, staff can clearly pull out all the fire department and police department emergency vehicle proposals for 15. And I guess, without quick thinking, the balance then would be subject to your holding back for a year, and that would be your answer. And that will be at your September 29 meeting, those dollars will be there.
It's just a thought, you know, we're dealing with almost like an emergency situation here. We have to take care of our building. It's like your car breaks down, you need a new motor, you get a new motor. And this auditorium is the same scenario. So what are we going to cut back with? You know, as a family, you have to make those budget changes, and if we could delay those purchases of those vehicles for a year, I'd be interested to see just how much that was, and maybe we can still maintain the rack eight reserve up to a certain level that's comfortable. Because I'm a little uncomfortable, although in the past, we have robbed, I shouldn't say robbed, we, Councilor Reese was concerned about taking money and putting it into the street improvement program. I believe that was about four years ago, and I think we took 60,000 or 70,000 out of that. So we brought that down, but those are my two concerns. And again, we can approve this, and thanks for coming up with everything, the staff people have done this, but we can also deal with the budget process on that thought or concept of vehicle replacement, and then reallocate the money into some of these funds or redistribute. Thank you.
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
Just, I just want to, a couple of comments, I guess. It's my understanding, in the research that was done, there's only two cities in the state of Minnesota that actually have gun ranges that are city-owned gun ranges. I believe that came from Mr. Presandine. Both of those gun ranges are being used for a public purpose. They're doing training, they're doing those types of things. So not anti-gun, not anti-gun range. I just question if the city can afford, with all the financing things that we're talking about, to finance a private gun range. And again, with the standpoint of, it's my understanding that those cities operate it as a business model, much like Mills do with the gun range in Brainerd, and there's a new one in Sauk Rapids. So when we say we're in a crisis, we're in a crisis to fix the auditorium, but we are talking about, I believe the figure is 300,000. Am I correct to restore the gun range?
309 would be the low bidder's estimate for that.
So while the auditorium is in a crisis, I hate to see us turn the city into a crisis by sending, spending another 309,000. That's going to be used for a private matter. I think, that's just my point. I support this, I just really question, without having that business model in place and agreement, that they are going to operate the way and at a level that will support the auditorium. That's my concern going forward, that we're not quite there yet. We pulled a sidewalk ordinance, because we didn't think we had enough documentation. Here, we're going ahead with a 300,000 expenditure, and we don't have a lease agreement in place. So I question that. I really do question that.
How do you suggest that we handle it? Do you have any suggestion?
I suppose we could table this and ask them to get the lease in place and find out what the license costs are, and make sure we've got all the dollars expended, but I don't believe that's the will of this council. And we did provide a direction to get it open, I just think this community needs to understand what it's costing us to do it.
Is there any further discussion? Councilman Omen?
I agree, Councilperson Nelson, on your stand on issue, and I think it's great. I hope we have some good negotiating people, and we sit down and talk to them to see if we can get some reimbursement. I'm not opposed to your thoughts either on looking at having another company come in there and paying us back for the use of that facility either. I think all options are open, and I think either way, it's an asset. But I agree with their comments, too, they are of great concern.
Councilman Christensen, did you have a comment?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To some, this may be a quality of life issue, as is the aquatic facility and the Civic Center ice arena. When we put ice out at the Civic Center, I forget the amount that we lose every hour, or that it costs us every hour to have it there, but it's a lot of money. We'd be better off, we wouldn't lose any money if we shut the doors and didn't have ice out there, but it's a quality of life issue. We accept that. We pay property taxes. We have the aquatic center, the same thing. It does not pay for itself. I think softball pays for itself, but the numbers are dwindling there. But a lot of these quality of life issues in the city don't pay for themselves. We kind of demand them. There's people that use the aquatic facility, they demand that we have one to use it there. Well, there's some gun owners that demand that we have a shooting range. It's been there, we've had it, it's nothing new, and I think we agree on the aquatic center and the Civic Center, you know, it's worth having, and we're seeing it as a quality of life issue, and we're doing the same thing with this gun range, and we aren't in a crisis. City Womer's not in a crisis financially. We've had one of the finest financial directors working for us for 20, 30-some years now, and he and the rest of staff, along with Kevin, are the reason we're sitting so well financially. Womer's in good shape, folks. It's in really good shape, and we can afford to fix this auditorium and open the gun range. There's not a problem there. Thank you.
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
Just one more comment. I didn't mean we were in a financial crisis, but we have a pool that has been closed for year two, that has absolutely no place, no process in place. That's a quality of life issue. We have playground equipment from the 1950s. That's a quality of life issue. I hope that if we can find money to spend the 300,000 to do this, that we are then willing to look for 300,000 to do some other things that other people believe are a quality of life issue also. Again, I just am concerned about that all the pieces in this are not in place yet.
Councilman Blake?
I agree, this is, would you say, call a quality of life issue? I think the, and not only that, the auditorium is an historic building, we have to be careful with that aspect of it as well. But the auditorium is used as an auditorium, basketball, tennis, whatever other recreational activities go on in that building, almost continuously, all day long. And the gun range has existed there for, let's say, a number of years, and we're just, we are just maintaining that facility and keeping it, keeping it in a usable, usable state. And, say, it is a quality of life issue, and it is used heavily by a large number of people in the community and both outside the community. Brings revenue into town. So, and, remember Nelson, like the other items you mentioned, we do need to address those items as well. Those are all interstructure items, where we need to keep this, with our facilities repaired and up to date. Those are all, say, those are all also quality of life issues. Those are all, say, those are all also quality of life issues.
Councilman Anderson? One last comment, we maybe should vote, but, um, I'm glad we're having this discussion on quality of life, because I think as we move forward with the budget, you know, there, there could be a proposal to change the levy amount. Now, that's going to be dependent upon, uh, what kind of data and information staff can put forward for us, but there will be things that, that will be needed, uh, or used in that increased levy, things such as parks. And I'm not going to go into the whole list, but let's just remember that when we start talking about either reductions, um, to expenses or increases in revenue, some of it is going to go for quality of life things. So, uh, just keep that in mind as we move forward.
We have a, um, resolution.
We have a resolution adopting the budget which lists the financing programs detailed.
Roll call.
Councilmember Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Omen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries?
It is staff's recommendation, Mr. Mayor, that we...
Motion to award the bid for the repairs to Cornerstone in the amount of 774,000. A motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded, uh, to award the bid to Cornerstone Construction. In the, in the term of 774,000 to Cornerstone, uh, and that would be a resolution, roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Discussion first of all.
Just, did he say 774, it's 744?
744?
Yeah.
744? That was my mistake, I wrote down the wrong number.
And I read the wrong number.[1241.42][1241.42](laughing) 744,000. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Omen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries? Is there any, uh, new business? Is there any old business? Go ahead.
I have a couple of matters that came up recently with some constituents in my area, if I could take...
Sure, take a few minutes.
Um, and as, as regarding this storm water retention area, Sean, uh, would, would you be willing to sit down and talk with some of the neighbors in 19th Street Southeast? They're, they're having flooding areas in their back, uh, back area close to ditch 23A. And I was back there last, uh, last week, and I, I think there may be an opportunity to take, uh, to maybe have the city park in that area, which is very, used very limitedly on 7th Street Southeast, to have a retention pond back there to alleviate some of their concerns. And if, if you could, uh, I'm going to send a few people from the neighborhood your way. I guess I'm pre-warning you.[1325.26][1325.26](laughing) And I, I just wonder if that was, uh, appropriate, and if, if this is the place to bring it up.
Mayor Yanis?
Make note of it.
Just a point of clarification, is that the one that was talked about at Public Works the other day?
Um, that was one of them, Councilmember Nelson, that was one of them that was talked about. And we have talked to, myself and the rest of the engineering departments, talked to a number of the residents out there, and I would be more than happy to talk to them again.
Also with that, Sean, and, and this comes back to the Public Works Committee, too, I think there's been a lack, I'm not going to be accusatory, uh, we seem to have a problem with drainage in our community. But, but I feel we may be, uh, there may be room for improvement is on the envisioning of future development into what type of development. For example, on the west side of Lakeland, um, Lakeland Drive, the Gesh property, they're by the YMCA, owns a lot of land there. What's that going to be? Eventually it's going to be residential. And if that turns into residential property or apartment buildings, we're going to have a large area of land that's acting as a holding pond right now, that's going to affect County ditch 23A, which is the area backed by the golf course. And also the area that we addressed at Public Works was with Mr. Kuzman's flooding in that area due to, uh, the drainage issue and other people have tapped into that line. I, I think there needs to be some concentrated efforts on the, uh, through the engineers, engineers' recommendations and thoughts on how we're going to pre-plan in the future for those developments, because this is going to happen sooner or later. It's surrounded on, on all four sides with residential property, and I don't know what Mr. Gesh's plans are in the future, if he should sell it, or just the attrition, but I think there's other areas in the community we should be looking at also to address this issue. And I think the sooner we get on it, Sean, I hate to burden you, but, uh, I think that's something we might want to consider, is the undeveloped lands that will be developed eventually and start putting, installing the infrastructure when we're tearing up the streets in the neighborhood to accommodate those storm retention issues.
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council, Councilman Omen, uh, those, there's a master plan in place that gets, uh, gets and needs to be regularly updated as far as the entire city goes, that includes drainage. What happens is, uh, every development that comes in, into town or developed or conceptually comes into town, they, uh, the drainage calculated report is given the, and provided to us as the engineering department, and those, those concerns are taken care of or are on a per-development basis. So the Gesh property you're talking about, if it was to become all apartments, um, the drainage from those apartments would be calculated and figured at that time and determine what to do with it, so that it doesn't either leave the property or adversely affect neighboring properties.
Thank you.
Hearing no more...
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
One other issue, uh, came up in Mr. Councilman Anderson's, the discussion finance on viewing buildings, um, having a bus tour of the facilities. I, I agree with that 100 percent. But what are we going to be viewing? What are we looking for? Um, I happen to be in a field that I, I think could be beneficial in some, some cases, but I have talked to, um, after the Brigmeier-Furzman study, we had a recommendation to have a, an individual onboard or online to take care of all the facility planning and improvements to our city's investments in buildings and how we're going to maintain those. I have talked in the meantime to a lot of local contractors, electricians, plumbers, HVAC individuals, roofers, and they all have committed to dedicate their time at no cost to view these buildings to give us some opinions. And I think it was very commendable of them, and I, I think that's a, a direction that we should maybe invite them, or some of those individuals along to see any deficiencies that we might have at the same time, or at a later date have them review them.
Go ahead. This, the thought I had in mind for this was primarily for us to really become familiar with. We're not going to do in-depth things. Staff hopefully is going to point out at the facility some of the big things that we need to be thinking about, and, and, you know, perhaps at a later time it would make sense to have those, but I think right now it's a, get a big picture, uh, look at things, because I think some of us, you know, don't have any idea on what, like what the doors were like at the civic center and some things like that. So this is a big picture look for the, for the council, and we can move forward.
Thank you.
Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope our fan base isn't gone through withdrawal, because the screen wasn't down again, and so they're not seeing, I'm not sure why the screen is not down, where we show when, uh, when people come to talk, you know? I don't think it was down at the last council meeting either. Then I want to mention that we, we did fly 100 flags at the Flags of Honor over Veterans' Day, and we had a large number of scouting folks that came out and helped us both put them up and take them down, which was a great event for us, and I hope you enjoyed seeing the 100 flags fly out to Flags of Honor site. And then I want to mention that on October the 8th, uh, the Veterans Administration will be in Wilmer at the American Legion to give free flu shots to veterans and family, wives of veterans.
Thank you. We will announce the meetings for next week. Councilmember Anderson?
The Finance Committee meet, will meet next week as, with this tour, and I would encourage, uh, all of the council members to get back to Kelsey as to which of the three days and times work for the majority of us. So that will be next week. The week after on the 29th, Finance Committee plus full council here at 4:45 to finalize the levy on our budget, amongst other things. Public Works, Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will work, uh, meet on Tuesday, the 23rd of September, 4:45.
Councilman Omen, Labor?
Uh, no Labor ma, uh, meeting, um, next week, but shortly thereafter we'll be discussing some of the issues that we addressed earlier.
Okay. Future development, Councilman Fagerly?
Our next meeting will be October 2nd, so no meeting next October 2nd.
We'll entertain a motion to adjourn, so...
No move.
We are adjourned.